I would like to call to order the Manona City Council meeting for Monday, January 4th, 2016. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spate.
Here.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Holmquist.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
Here.
Alder Bussey.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before you, I see we have been handed out a revised set of minutes. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the December 7th meeting.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
And obviously, we must have a correction, Joan.
The only revision, Mayor Miller, was a notation that Alder Thomas and Alder O'Connor did not vote for themselves to be election inspectors.
Such will. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes have been approved. There are no, there's no one here this evening for the appearances section. There's no public hearing. We have a consent agenda, approval of applications for 2015-16 operators licenses, and approval of applications for 2015 and 17 operators licenses. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Licenses have been approved. Under item G, council action items, there is no unfinished business this evening under new business. Item 2A, you will notice starred for immediate action, is consideration of Resolution 16-1-2063, authorizing the city of Manona to apply for a large-scale lake management planning grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, brought forth by the Public Works Director. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Right.
This item out of order.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Move approval.
There's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Stefani.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you have the resolution for the grant that we did apply for. The deadline for the grant was December 10th, 2015. We got our grant submitted on December 9th, 2015. We were made aware of this grant just a few days prior to the deadline, so this resolution being accepted is retroactive back to the December 10th deadline. We did inform the DNR that we would be getting this approval at tonight's meeting if you approve it. This relates to the engineering work that Strand is doing for us, for the engineering on the PCBs that's at Winnequa Park. We were notified by the DNR midway through 2015 of an action plan that we have to come up with. We hired Strand to do that, and we have some expenses, so we thought this would be a good grant to help reimburse the city, I guess to help cover Strand's costs. So, the grant prep cost was $3,500. We have Strand under contract for the first phase for $9,000, and we have about $2,300 for sampling to do. So, we have to submit a site investigation report. That's after we do the sampling. After that, we have to submit a remedial action options report. That's to be determined yet. So, part of the assistance from Strand will be dedicated to that report. That's not even completed yet. So, what we're looking for is the approval for this resolution, for the grant application. The DNR would reimburse the 67% of the city's cost. That would be up to $25,000 that we would get. Our share would be $12,313. So, we have a good feeling that we will be getting awarded these funds, so.
Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The resolution passes. Item, thank you, Dan. Item 2B is consideration of Resolution 16-1-2064, the purchase approval of one current model year, one-ton chassis cab, brought forth by the Public Works Committee. I will note earlier this evening that Personnel and Finance, this motion passed. Mr. Stefani.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet is a resolution and fiscal note to purchase a one-ton cabin chassis under the state contract. This request will also go to the January 6th Public Works Committee meeting, and then come back to City Council for the mid-January meeting for approval. The purchase cost is $28,362 for a cab chassis purchased through the state contract from Ewald Automotive Group. Purchasing through the state contract, the State Department of Administration takes care of all the bid notices, the bid award, writing the specifications, pretty much everything. All we have to do is get the contract information from the state website and then contact one of the vendors. In this case, it's Ewald Automotive. Public Works has purchased vehicles from them before. The police department buys their squads from Ewald, so we do have a history buying through state contract and at Ewald. So, this is just the first read here at Council, so I'll be back mid-month with this.
Any questions of Mr. Stefani? Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Item C is consideration of Resolution 16-1-2065, the purchase approval of one current model year plow truck equipment package brought forth by the Public Works Committee. I will also note earlier this evening that Personnel and Finance, this item was tabled until further feedback from this body and the Public Works Committee. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Also in your packet is the proposal summary, resolution, fiscal note, and some data for the proposal requests that we had. As the mayor mentioned, this was tabled at Finance. We will be taking this to the Public Works Committee this week, and then back here at the mid-month meeting in January for approval. This replaces a 1995 international dump truck and snowplow, and as I stated in my fiscal note, I'm actually seeking approval on the high-cost proposal provided by Lakeside International. The second-place proposal came from Truck Country, which was about a $219 difference from the high-cost proposal Lakeside International. VNH Trucks supplied the low-price proposal for a Western Star truck. We're not seeking approval on that, for one, they didn't meet the specifications that were written for the bid. They supplied no explanations on the deviations, and I also included some comments from Lakeside International that explained some of the deviations from the Western Star model versus the international truck model. They added some of the bigger ticket items. It comes to over $8,000. That would have been added to the cost had they met the vehicle specifications, so that would have actually put that vehicle at a higher cost than the Lakeside International model. On the fiscal note, as you can see, we have approval for $183,000 in 2016. The total combined price for the vehicle that we would want to buy is $172,719.90. So, we're over $10,000 below our budgeted amount. Five of the six trucks that we have right now for plow trucks are the international model. We also do have three Freightliner trucks for our leaf collection trucks, so we have familiarity with both brands. We're seeking approval from Council and seeking approval from the Public Works Committee for the Lakeside International model. Like I said, we have the familiarity. Our mechanic is familiar with maintaining those vehicles, and again, the VNH model did not meet the specification, so.
Alder Thomas?
I thought if they didn't meet the specs, we tossed them. That's what I always thought. If they don't meet the specs, they don't meet the specs, and we don't even consider them.
But it's still part of the proposal summary. I mean, I'm explaining why we're not recommending that purchase, so.
Okay.
Further questions? Alder O'Connor?
I'm curious why Finance and Personnel.
Alder Bussey?
Yeah, the Truck Country and Lakeside, we've, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, we've done business with both of them, so they're an approved vendor. Truck Country met the specifications, and it's a lower price than Lakeside. So, if I'm Truck Country, and I supply the lowest bid, and I'm not accepted, what motivation do I have to ever bid the city of Manona again? So, we, my conversation at Finance was iron that out at Public Works and figure out what the best recommendation would be, but if I were, from the limited information that we have here, and Public Works gets all the specs and everything, and if there's a reason for it, but with the limited information here, if I'm Truck Country, I'm upset and I have no desire to do business with Manona again. I don't want that to happen. If they're qualified, they should get to work.
Right, and as Alder and Bussey mentioned, we do have experience with Freightliner, or I should say Truck Country, as well as Lakeside International. Going into the 2016 budget season, I was working with both representatives. You know, we had specs on both models. We just chose to write the spec based off the Lakeside International model. The rough number going into budget season for the chassis was $103,000, so just by having this RFP, made everybody sharpen their pencil, and we've got some darn good prices on the chassis. But if the Council and Public Works Committee wants us to go with Freightliner, we have no problems going with Freightliner. They're both good trucks.
Further questions? All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Item D, you will notice starred for immediate action, is consideration of Resolution 16-1-2066, authorizing the redemption of general obligation refunding bonds dated February 15th, 2008, brought forth by the Finance Director. So, motion, suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
It's motion and second. I will note that this was approved at Personnel and Finance earlier this evening.
What this is, is back in 2008, TIF 2 did a refunding, so they issued general obligation refunding bonds. The bonds are now callable as of this year, and the bonds would be paid off if we don't do this on 12/1/2016. So, what this is, is that the bondholder says it's callable, we can pay it off early. We don't be paid off now they're callable, there's no penalty to pay it off. It saves, it's the last payment, basically, on this bond. It saves the city, the TIF number two, $18,010. It's not a large amount, but it is savings, and that savings right now is used as a donor district to TIF four and TIF five. So, that's what the recommendation was, is to pay this off early to get a little bit of a savings of $18,000.
Questions of Mark? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Spate.
Aye.
Alder O'Connor.
Aye.
Alder Holmquist.
Aye.
Alder Thomas.
Aye.
Alder Bussey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item E, you will note again, is starred for immediate action, is consideration of Resolution 16-1-2067, providing for the sale of $5 million, $25,000 of general obligation promissory notes series, 2016, brought forth by the Finance Director. This too was approved earlier this evening at Personnel and Finance. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Take this item out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Mark?
Yes, there's two things involved in this. We're wrapping up in one loan, and that's based on a recommendation from our financial advisor, Jeff Belangi. The first part is the borrow for the capital projects. Back in November, we approved a $3.2 million capital budget. Of that, 2.9 is what we need to borrow for. We have other revenues for some portion, and some of it was cable, or for the media capital assets. So, portion of that's the 2.9 to get that going. The reason why we're doing this in January, and usually we do it in March, is because part of the capital budget process, we found there's some savings.
[inaudible]
There's some savings we can take advantage of if we pay up front, one's a fire truck, some other discounts with that. So, that's why we're doing it right now. Usually, it's usually March, and right now, as you're aware of, some of the market stuff that's going on, this is, you know, the Feds are raising the rates a little bit, so this is a prime time for us to borrow. So, that's 2.9. The other portion is, back in 2008, we did borrow, and part of the capital projects was 3.9, $3,925,000, and that they had set up a balloon payment of $2,125,000, and that comes due in 2017. But that is now callable too, so there is some savings by doing this now. It's roughly about $30,000 worth of saving interest to do that. So, you're going to wrap that into one larger loan, and with that, do it together. Jeff Belangi stated this will get better interest, get a better interest because of the larger dollar amounts, we get better buyers into the market. One of the biggest concerns I had with this was with the 2,000, was the refi amount. I didn't want him to come and say, "Well, let's refi this again," so it keeps on getting refi'd, and he guaranteed, and I have emails with that, that he has structured, so this will not have to be refi'd again, and so that would be paid off in fall when it comes due. So, that was his recommendation, and so this is recommendation I'm bringing to you. This is the authorization for Jeff to start negotiating with the bondholders, so he'll come back, if he gets approval tonight, to start that negotiation. He'll come back at the next meeting. He'll give you what he negotiates, you know, he'll go through that. We don't have to accept it if we don't want to, but most, I think, every time since I've been here, we have accepted what he's given us. So, that is the process that starts.
And the estimated savings you thought would be?
About $30,000.
$30,000, so between the two, $48,000 savings. Discussion? Questions? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussey.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Spate.
Aye.
Alder O'Connor.
Aye.
Alder Holmquist.
Aye.
Alder Thomas.
Resolution passes. Item F is consideration of Resolution 16-1-2069, ratifying the list of city of Manona landmark properties brought forth by the Landmarks Commission. Sonia?
I have two items from the Landmarks Commission tonight, and both of them were a result of an entire turnover of the Landmarks Commission membership occurring within the last couple of months. So, there are five brand-new members replacing members that had been on the commission since it began in 1975. So, as part of this process of getting new members, we're reviewing all of the records that applied to the Landmarks Commission, and we found some question or just, you know, some lack of records for what exactly are our official city of Manona landmark properties. So, we have been operating under the assumption that we do have these 24 official landmarks that are listed in Exhibit A of the resolution, and those have been adopted at different points, with some of the list being officially adopted by an action of the Council in 1979, and then with the remaining ones being adopted in the comprehensive plan in 2004, and then also being published into Landmarks Commission books. And we have also physically marked those sites with boulders and plaques that explain their historical significance, so we've definitely been operating under the assumption that those are our landmark properties, but to make sure that there is no question and that there's a comprehensive official record, we have this resolution ratifying these to make it a matter of record.
One, is Ernie's Trading Post landmark a twofer? Because that was also put in places during our 75th anniversary?
No.
Or is that an additional landmark?
It's one count under the city of Manona, and then what happened in the 75th anniversary was an additional marker by the Dink County Historical Society.
Any additional questions? Alder Bussey?
Are all of the owners of the properties listed here, are they aware of, they're being designated historic location?
Yes. Most of them have markers on their property also, so I think it's clear to them.
And are there any deed restrictions with being listed as a city landmark for remodeling or changes?
I'm not aware of any deed restrictions. It's not a requirement of any of our codes, but there is a process associated with being a landmark property for any alterations.
Alder Bussey?
Well, the second item that Sonia's going to bring up, if anybody plans any improvements at the site, they have to go before the Landmarks Commission and the Plan Commission, and...
God help them at Plan.
Whether the proposed work would detrimentally change, destroy, or adversely affect any architectural features. So, if you're planning on selling to some condo in heaven and torn down, you're SOL. So, there's not deed restrictions, but there's ordinances that...
Alder Thomas?
Yeah, didn't we, when, was it Manona Drive, when we were doing the construction, that we ran into difficulties at Nichols?
There was, the only, and I just came across those papers recently, again, was with Nichols School. The question is what could be done, and that was eight years ago perhaps, and there was nothing there that precluded anything from tearing down to selling to doing anything.
So, you could take down?
They'd still have to go to Plan, I mean, you'd have to go through that process, but there was not something like there are on national historic landmark building where you can't touch a shingle without getting approval. But if Plan Commission would allow Nichols School to be torn down, it could be torn down.
Which that's currently the process right now. I mean, we've had people that show up to the Plan Commission that want to make an alteration to a building that's already deemed a landmark, and they come before the Plan Commission already for these types of recommendations about architectural characteristics and are already approved. This first item is really just agreeing that this is the list of properties. We're kind of getting ahead of the ballgame, going to the second item, where I think that's the piece about, is there a true process, which right now is unclear, and the second item is to help clarify that process.
Why don't we move on unless there's something more on the first item that someone wants to discuss? Why don't we move on to item G, which is consideration of ordinance 1-16-673, amending Section 13-1-64, the code of ordinances concerning historic conservation, brought forth by the Landmarks Commission. Sonia?
Thank you. So, I'll first explain what the current ordinance is, and it's a very brief section, one paragraph that guides historic conservation in the community, and what it does is triggers a review process when there's an application for a zoning permit or an occupancy permit, and at that time, the application is forwarded to the commission, which in this case is the Plan Commission, to make a determination of the effect that those improvements would have on the historic property. And when the Plan Commission makes that determination, they look at the three points under Section E, so they're the same in the new ordinance, so would it detrimentally change, destroy, or adversely affect any architectural feature? If it's new construction, is it going to be in harmony with the other landmarks on the site? And then three, would the proposal significantly alter or destroy the historic characteristics of the landmark or landmark site? So, currently, zoning or occupancy permit triggers the review process, and it goes to Plan Commission. They make a determination regarding those three points, and then at that point, if they deem it necessary, they forward the application to City Council, and at that point, City Council has the option to pursue a strategy for acquisition or preservation, and that can range from anything preservation-wise of simply marking the site with a boulder, taking photos, doing oral histories and that sort of thing, to full-up acquisition by whatever means the City Council determines appropriate. So, that's the process today. It doesn't in the end require or prohibit a developer from doing anything, or from a homeowner from demolishing it, but what it does is provide a process to get to that point where Council can make a decision whether they should pursue acquisition or preservation. There are two substantive changes that the Landmarks Commission requested in the new ordinance, and the first is under Section F, action on permit application. They've inserted that the permit application shall first be referred to the Landmarks Commission for consideration. So, recognizing that the Landmarks Commission is charged with perpetuating local history and preserving our landmarks, they have certain expertise that would be beneficial to the Plan Commission as they make their determination, and so they've inserted that as a step in the process as an advisory recommendation. They don't have a final authority in the process. And then from there, the process continues as it does today, with the Plan Commission reviewing those one, two, and three, and forwarding it to Council if they deem necessary. So, also worth noting, today, we often forward those applications to the Landmarks Commission anyway as a courtesy, because it often can fall within the timeframe of Plan Commission review, and the property owners are often agreeable to it, generally respect the role of the Landmarks Commission, at least that's what's been the case so far. The second addition was under Section E, determination of effect on proposed use or improvement. So, rather than triggering the process with just a zoning or an occupancy permit, we've inserted that the process would be triggered with a demolition permit, with the thought that you could be a homeowner and put an addition on your house, and that would need to go through this process with the city, but if you wanted to demolish the landmark, there would be no process. So, seemed a little counterintuitive, so that's been added. Those are the two main substantive changes. It still doesn't change the authority of the city at the end of the day. It still goes to Council for consideration of acquisition or preservation. And the rest of the language, really, it was, it's common in a lot of ordinances to have the purpose and intent section and the designation criteria. I don't think there's anything too controversial there. It's important to have designation criteria, so you have objective measures when you're identifying landmarks. And also, those were included in the original 1975 ordinance. Somehow, along the way, they were omitted. It's not clear why, but that information is added back in there.
So, going back to Nichols School, if the school district determined that they wanted to sell that building theoretically, because they just put millions of dollars into it, so I don't think that's going to happen, but if they did, and a developer wanted to tear it down to put in housing, it would go through the normal processes and probably wouldn't be approved, but theoretically could be approved? There's nothing that stops a historic building from being torn down?
Right. This does not prohibit demolition or redevelopment from happening, but it gives it a process.
Alder Bussey?
I'm confused. I'm, what I'm reading here is D reports, recommendations, and then the bold headline, determination of effect on proposed use or improvement. If an application for a zoning building demolition permit under this code involves a landmark or landmark site designated by such, by the Landmarks Commission, Plan Commission, the Plan Commission shall determine whether the proposed work would detrimentally change, destroy, or adversely affect any architectural feature of the property. So, if they determine it's going to destroy it, then what happens?
Then, look down to Section F. Little more than halfway through, it says, "And after consideration."
Where's F? Oh, F, all right, it's real faded, okay.
If after consideration of the purpose and intent of this section, after their determination made in Section E, if the Plan Commission deems it appropriate, it shall refer the application to the common Council for consideration of acquisition or preservation of the landmark or landmark site.
So, acquisition means they either buy it, or they...
Pursue a preservation strategy, but it doesn't...
Allow you to...
Tie your hands as to what that means.
But it doesn't allow you to tear it down, does it?
It doesn't. It doesn't prohibit it, so it, you can-
Yes, it does allow you. If somebody does, if this group does not come up with a strategy to stop it, yes, it can be torn down.
Sonia, is it correct that under the law, it would need to have like state or federal landmark protection in order for it to be prevented from being torn down?
Yeah, I don't know all the details of those additional designations, but they're more-
Federal for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's really the only real, real teeth to absolutely prevent it.
And it's very common for local ordinances to be like this, where there is no real teeth at the end of the day. This is pretty standard for other communities.
Alder Homquist?
I think the intent here was to help ensure that when the Plan Commission is being charged with answering those three questions, that they have some advisory information from a group that takes us on as an area of interest or expertise to help advise that group when they're answering those questions. And so if it is someone with Nichols School and they want to tear it down, and the Plan Commission, based on the recommendation from the Landmarks Commission, can be, boy, that's something that we want to preserve, and this is why, it would be up to this body to help put together a plan to maybe look at some of the major historic value pieces of it and how that could be incorporated, to work with that applicant, rather than just thumbs up, thumbs down kind of scenario.
Alder Thomas?
Is the decision of the Plan Commission appealable to the council?
So the only action that the Plan Commission is taking in this process is to make a determination. The only action is by council for an acquisition or preservation strategy. So the Plan Commission is not determining whether we'll save it or not.
So the council makes the decision?
Right.
And is that appealable?
Only for appeals is our appeal body.
No, it's not, it's not for that. No.
I think that's something I-
Goes to court.
I think that's something I flagged when we look at the new codification process, that we should take a look at our appeals process.
Well, normally, in the past, when the council has done something like license or other kinds of things, those kinds of appeals go to court.
Right, right, but there are some sections in there I just had some questions about, but-
So at the end of the day, nothing's really changed in the actual end result of this ordinance-
That's correct.
Upgrade. It's a matter of clarification.
It does-
Has the attorney reviewed this?
Yes.
And he agrees with everything you're saying?
It does, it does two things. It adds the Landmarks Commission as an advisory review committee, and it adds demolition permits as a trigger. It does not change any authority of the city regarding any historic designation.
Alder O'Connor?
Right, I just wanted to say, Brian was correct that it, the primary reason we decided to do this on Landmark Commission is because it, obviously something like Nichols School, well, you know that that's significant, but some of these other sites, people may not realize. So I think the Landmarks Commission just wanted to be sure that we had some input, were able to give some input to the Plan Commission in case it didn't come to us as, as to, you know, what the significance was, so that that was taken into consideration. And that's why we asked to have the ordinance revised.
And landmarks, albeit their title is as what they were known as when they were historically important, it's by address is supersede, you know, like Morningside Sanatorium, no longer exists, Ernie's Trading Post. It's the address in the building.
Right, so those are the landmark sites.
So there, some are sites and some are structures.
Correct.
Right, Royal Airport, obviously. Life has moved on, have many planes landing. I haven't seen Lindbergh in months.
He was at that bar.
There you go, yeah, that's right.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alders Homquist and O'Connor. Item H is convening in closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, per N1, per N C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is to discuss the change in title of the city planner's salary adjustment. Is there a motion to convene in closed session? So move.
Second.
It's a motion second. Would clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will reconvene in about 15 minutes. I would like to reconvene in open session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, per N2. Moving on to Item J is consideration of Resolution 16-1-2068, amending the 2016 operating budget to adjust the salary for the city planner brought forth by the city administrator. I will note this is still first read, so this item will be before this body at the next council meeting for final decision-making. Anyone that wanted to add anything? Alder Thomas?
I think this is more than, and we discussed it, it's more than adjusting the salary for the city planner. It is increasing the scope of work to include community development and therefore adjusting the salary to increase added responsibilities.
And defining the title.
Right.
Yep. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? All right, we will be back at this in two weeks. Item H is reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayor, city administrators, city attorney, and department managers. Alder, Sonny, did you have anything you wanted to share? If you do, please come to the mic.
One item, I didn't get my report into the packet, so wanted to let you know that the Comprehensive Plan draft is done, and we've been working on this for about two years. So it's exciting, the entire document is in one place and ready to be reviewed, and I've emailed that to all of you and to the Plan Commission. There will be a public hearing at the January 25 Plan Commission meeting, and I'll do a little presentation at that meeting for the Plan Commission's information. And then there's a 30-day required comment period that will occur throughout February, and it will come to the council in March, and there will be another public hearing at the March meeting.
And it'll be a two-reading process?
Yes.
All right, good news.
Thanks.
Congratulations. I hope, Alder Homquist?
No report.
Alder Thomas?
Two things, Public Works meets on Wednesday night, and I will be, go on to, my mother has some issues, and I have some issues with the snow, so I'm leaving on Thursday for Florida, and I will be returning on the 9th of February. So I will miss two meetings. But I read my email a lot, and I have my phone.
Alder Bussie?
No report, no.
Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spate?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report, question I got, just to confirm, we're going to meet on January 19th next time?
As you know, it's, generally no, it's Martin Luther King Day in two weeks from today, and it has been the, the desire of this body to cancel the meeting for that evening and move it to the next evening. There is a potential conflict that evening, probably not, but court is going to happen on Martin Luther King Day, and that occurs in here, so there's not a trial scheduled for that evening, which would drive the ending time later. So we will probably be okay, but it's just a what-if.
So is it the desire of this group to move it to Tuesday?
I think it's actually the officially adopted policy-
High ordinance. We have to.
Is it? Oh. Okay, I did not know that, too, when I asked about that, they didn't think it was an ordinance. Okay. So then we'll be Tuesday, and we don't have a conflict that night. Anything else, Alder Wood?
No.
City clerk?
Mayor Miller nomination papers are due in my office tomorrow by 5 o'clock. We do have three candidates for the three spots for Alders.
19.
And one mayor, sorry, mayor candidate, yeah.
Oh, that's Alder Wood.
One judge candidate, so we're, we're set.
Super. City administrator, little?
Well, the first few weeks, I think I've met with all the department heads and took tours of all the facilities and parks, see what I can help with, and also talked about the university projects with staff, and did some work to start the recodification process so that we're ready to go by the end of February. And Sonia and I met with some developers and on some projects, basically waiting to hear back on, on all of those projects. We had some union negotiations. There is a grievance filed regarding the opt-out memorandum of understanding, but we're somewhat in a waiting process on those. I finalized the insurance paperwork to change over the property insurance to, oh, what does MPIC stand for again? Municipal Property Insurance Company, something like that. And we did take another estimate from Houseman Insurance, but it was, it was at a higher price. And I think that's it, just other cosmetic things, reformatted a little bit the department head reports, so if you have feedback on that, let me know, and also the code letters that go out. And I should be helping to tape my first little radio information spot tomorrow, so excited about that, hoping to use the radio to get some more information out, especially for new people like me, like where to park when it's snowing out. So these are, things are good to know.
That's good. Just two things, I want to extend a compliment, I wish Dan was still here, to the city crews. I thought they once again did an exemplary job of, in spite of, I know of one disgruntled resident who made their unhappiness, but it's just, there's no way of getting past the fact that the plow is going to leave snow on your apron. And depending what time the plow goes past your apron is when that snow will be there. And if it's five minutes after you cleared your driveway, we apologize, but a wing plow cannot move snow from your apron, so, but I thought they did an excellent job, and today they were out doing some touch-ups and cleanup. So hats off to the city crew. And then importantly, I saw a brief post from the Parks and Recs Department. I think you are allowed to skate on the Laguna, there's three inches of ice. I was on the lake yesterday, and it was wonderful, and it's really smooth, beautiful ice. But the park shelter, the Winaquish, the warming shelter will not be open until there's four inches of snow, of ice, excuse me, which probably will happen tonight, because it was clear when I got here, and it's cold out, so skating, I think, is semi-officially open on the Laguna. That's all I have. We have a singular appointment this evening. Kathy Thomas will be joining the Distinguished Service Award Committee for a vacancy we have there, effective immediately, serving until May 2016.
Is there a motion for approval? Move approval.
Second.
Is there a second? You want to recuse yourself?
I'm sorry, Brian.
To abstain as soon as you-
Pick one of us.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alder Thomas has recused herself. Congratulations. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So move.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.